Hello everyone, thank you for attending tonight. We have our usual agenda here that I just want to make sure that folks understand that during our hearing and privilege of the floor will again not be taking direct comments because of this the environment we're in right now. So I'm going to do one new thing here because I was told in my latest president's board meeting that we should do that, which is I'm going to go through all of our names. And if you guys don't mind saying aye that you're here, that would be great. Um, Dan?
Aye.
David? Dave? I think he's back. Okay, I see him. Hal? Pam?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Okay, Dan, I'm here. Thank you all. At this point, we are going to do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, with indivisible and liberty for all. Thank you, everybody. As I just mentioned a second ago, because we're remote again today, there won't be a hearing and privilege of the floor as we would normally have in person. But again, I would encourage everyone, if you want to make a comment, you can use, I believe, the chat boxes is open to work. Um, and also I would say to email us if you would like to have a question answered. I know folks are, you know, we had a lot of questions last week with a lot of hours of conversation. So if you have a question you need to have answered, I would recommend that you send it to us. Thank you. With that, I'm going to move on to the superintendent's comments. Susan?
Thank you, David. Three things I'd like to discuss with folks tonight or share with you. The first is that on Friday, we closed the survey, our parent survey. And at that point, we are still running about 78% of our parents who will return their children for in-person learning and 2% who are seeking virtual learning for their child. Tomorrow I will put out a message, have Bob post it on Facebook, which will say, if at this point you want to change what you submitted or you haven't submitted, you must call the office of the school where your child attends by close of business Wednesday and tell us what your changes or what you're expecting. And if we don't hear from you, we will prepare for your child to return in person. And that's because, as you folks are aware, the harder lift for us will be in person as we make sure that we are keeping folks socially distant. And that if people require transportation, that we can be socially distant with us. So that's going to happen. I want to share with you that we've had some clarification from the Career and Technical Education Center in terms of BOSI's programs, vocational programs. The way our schedule is currently set up, we would be able to transport students to Botech or New Visions on the days when they were in person with us, because again, the bus runs are set up that way. I was able to clarify with the Career and Tech Ed programs today that students can actually attend Botech every day. However, on the days that you're in person, you either are going to need to drive there or be dropped off there by a parent or guardian because at this point, we would not be able to fit you on the buses to get you to Botech. So again, Botech will be available five days a week for students. We'll only transport you the district at this point on in-person days. If in fact, we can change that up as we progress into the school year, we certainly will. But at this point, I would not have room for you on the buses. And finally, the governor spoke about sports today. He's going to allow some sports in the fall sports season, including tennis, soccer, cross-country, field hockey, and swimming. He is also saying that other sports can begin practice. And you might remember that practices begin December 21st. Sports, but that they cannot play until a later date or potentially December 31st. This will create a bit of a problem in the way that we appoint coaches. So though Drew is here, he doesn't know I'm going to say this yet, we've got to check with our attorneys because that actually breach more than one sports season. In the way our current fiscal setup is for coaches, you're paid in the season that you coach. You're paid across the year, but we, the dollars are actually attached to a coaching season. So I'm not sure what that really means, especially if we're coaching for sports that we don't know are going to take place. So that's a bit of a quandary to me this afternoon, based on what the governor has said. He's also saying that for sports that you do host, the contests that are planned must be regional or contiguous to our region. So I'm assuming foothills contests could take place. But again, we'll see further clarification on that. It does not look like there'll be state championships or those kinds of things as of this point. And spectators will be limited to two spectators per athlete. So there are many things that we will have to figure out if in fact we move forward, how those things will be handled here. In addition, I'm going to suggest to Dave that we invite Dr. Buff as our school physician to speak with us about what the school physicians are thinking about sports, sports participation at our first meeting on September 14th, maybe. Yep, on the 14th, and hear what their, what our school physicians thoughts are about conducting sports in the fall, under the current set of circumstances. So Dave, that's everything for me unless someone has questions.
I'll ask a quick question. I'm going to assume that when the governor said December 31st, or when he deems appropriate, he is meaning for indoor sports that may linger into that area because I am not expecting that we are going to put the snowplows on the all-sports field and have a January 1st football game.
While I would agree with you, Dave, that was not made clear in what was posted after the press briefing.
Okay.
So we're, that's why I'm saying we're going to have to wait for clarification. For example, say, we're going to start playing football in April. I don't know. But this gets into this question again of how then do we pay our coaches and what does that mean? And it will not come as a surprise to you that I'm very concerned about finances this year. So I want to make sure I truly understand what we are committing to.
Yes. Thanks, Susan. The other question I had was, my assumption is going to be that we would be playing soccer on the all-sports field. So do we know, and I should know this, I've been reading this stuff inside now, but I can't recall whether there's special guidelines for maintenance of those fields after sporting events.
Drew's going to interrupt me if I have this incorrect, but yes, we have special maintenance protocols in terms of the fields. I don't know if there are additional protocols in terms of your fields and if you play on them. I have just printed off the 14 pages of guidance on athletics and sports, but I haven't read it yet. So I will have to defer to Drew if he knows that for a fact at this point, if there are special things over COVID.
Not that any special we wouldn't be doing anyways, like disinfecting, cleaning up fields, you know, as far as bacteria, I think it's a kid's spit. That's already in place that we started last fall. But the soccer field, the new soccer field is turned over to the district. The baseball field is ready, the soccer field is ready. The new field hockey is not, that's kind of, we just put the sod down last week. So that's not going to be ready for the fall. The multi-purpose is ready, baseball's ready, and the soccer grass field.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry to ask it. It just said it came to me just this minute and normally I'd have prepped you for that question. Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. And if we will read through the guidance and see what specific things other than those we have in place might be recommended.
Yeah, and we've got a lot of time, Susan. September 21st, so.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, it's not, no rush on it. It just, it dawned on me after I was thinking about, you can't play football on the field, but you can play soccer on the field and it's kind of similar thought process. So did anybody have questions for Susan about what?
Susan, I have a question for you. So just to clarify, students who are attending CTE or Botech classes, they must attend Scotia Glenville as an in-person student and not as a virtual student, correct? Because you can't be a virtual learner and then go just the one day to BOSI's, correct?
Correct. We are at this point looking at cap reach and attendance, CTE, or New Visions as you are an in-person student.
Right. And it's open Monday through Friday for them. And then on the days that you do not attend in-person in Scotia Glenville, you will need to provide transportation by yourself.
At this point, yes, Kim.
Perfect. Just wanted to clarify for people.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Hey Susan, I do have a question about the, go figure, the sports end of it. I know we had talked about, stop laughing, Dan. I know we had mentioned before the virtual learning students and the in-person students, how your comfort level is if they can play sports, if they can't play sports now that Governor Cuomo has decided you can play soccer. Makes no sense to me, but not football. And then part two of that is, does that now mean that the campus is open and all of the school fields are now open again for use?
So I would say no, since sports don't technically start till September 21st, I would not say our fields are open yet. Although I would be the first to say there are occasionally people on our fields. We are also still on construction sites, so that's the other thing. I would be a little worried about people being here right now with all the heavy-duty equipment. Right. You know, certainly, I'll be quite blunt, certainly a family could appeal this to commissioner. But I don't see how, if you don't think it's safe to have your kids here at school, it was safe to have you come and play sports. And again, we can talk about, but that does remain my position. I think, say, in person, then you have access to the sports that are being offered. But if you can't come in for school, I don't know why mom and dad would think it was safe for you to be playing sports, especially when we talk about sports, field hockey, certainly soccer, where you're going to come into contact with people. There's no two ways about that. So.
Well, I know you can't tell now in my current state, but back in the day, yeah, when I played soccer, we were more physical than the football team was in Burn Hill. So I would agree with you, I would agree with you there.
Yes. So again, I'm willing to hold that line. Of course, I would do that with the board's support. So we will have further discussion about it. And I will want Dr. Buff to speak with you about his thinking as a school physician. And then you can make your decisions based on those things. But at this point, if you're going to play sports, I think you need to be in person in school.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, real quick. So it sounds like there's an opportunity for some sports to be played.
Yes.
Is there consideration for maybe an influx of participation, being that there's a limited number of sports in terms of coaching and staffing?
I don't think we've even looked at that or thought about that, Rick, quite honestly, because we just found out today we could play, potentially play some things regionally. So I'll be looking, this was just out this afternoon. I'll be asking Mr. Rockhill to give me some idea of what he thinks is going to happen, but I don't know yet. And since the other sports can practice, like football, although with no idea of when they might actually play, as of the 21st, and with low contact, low or no contact, is the other piece of that in the governor's announcement today. I'm also not sure how you practice football with no contact, but you know, be that as it may. I don't know what that would really mean because you can't be playing two sports at once. The practices would and practice time will, although I believe it's being reduced, you have to have had a certain number of practices before a contest. So I just think that's going to get pretty convoluted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm not really sure that was much of an answer, Rick, other than we don't have enough clarity yet.
I should have, I should have thought before asking because you only found out today really, but I didn't know if that was top of mind or if nothing else is kind of a suggestion.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks.
And do you know if modified would be played?
Modified is mentioned at all, Dan, so I don't know what that really means. Again, this was pretty specific to competitive athletics, not that modified is not competitive. So I will be seeking more information.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would also say Ed Dop, who is the guru of section two, or I'm sorry, yes, of section two, emailed right after the governor's announcement and said, there are more unanswered questions than answered questions. I'm not sure who was talking to who before we made this announcement today. But section two has been in a holding pattern while we've waited for, now he asked for to make a decision, and now the governor's made the decision. So I don't really know if they're even geared up yet. Section two in the New York State High School Athletic Association. I don't know if they knew this was coming.
And Susan, I think you can throw in the referees association as well. I heard from them this afternoon and, and they said that this came as a shock to them. They had gotten different information earlier today that something, it was going to be different than what they heard. So they probably, they're probably confused as well. Any other?
As we said at every town hall, things just keep changing.
Dave, referees always know everything. You haven't learned that by now?
Yeah, I know. I have, believe me. So while we're on this topic of opening and things, I was going to save this for new business, but I think it fits with Susan's announcement of having our fine doctor joining us. My thought, folks, is that we would be joining Susan in a hybrid meeting on the 14th. And what I mean by that would be those of us who are comfortable or whose health allows us to have an in-person meeting would be meeting in person. And those who are unable to meet with us in person would be brought in via a conference call. We try to set it up so that we're all visible to everyone. That, of course, is going to depend upon the governor extending the ability to do virtual meetings beyond, I think the date was September 14th. I might be wrong. So that is the initial thought. I wanted folks to think about that to their comfort level. My, my feeling was, we're asking the students to come back. I feel most comfortable with us also coming back. That said, I also know that we're keeping people out of the school for health reasons. So I am not, this is definitely not trying to say everybody should show up because a month and a half ago, I would not have been able to come because of my health situation. So that was my thought initially here. So and Susan, as far as we know, that would be okay, right?
Correct. The current executive order expires on September 5th, I believe.
Okay. So folks, think about it and we will, we'll, we'll have this conversation again a little bit more, but I just wanted you to all think about that. So thank you. If there's no other questions for Susan, we'll move to number five on our agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion to accept the budget creation status and revenue status reports, fund balance, projection for 2019 to 2020 fiscal year.
Thank you, Kim. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Pam. Are there any questions on this? Anybody need further explanation?
Maybe if we could just have a few words from Drew.
Drew, Pam, good idea.
Go ahead.
What I presented to the superintendent and while being shared with the board is the fourth fiscal projection, which shows you the revenue creation status report, analysis of fund balance, which evolved onto our audit firm to be audited. The board as a whole will receive a audit report in sometime in October, and it should closely replicate what I'm presenting tonight. What's tonight's presentation displays is a, a fund balance at 4.63% of the 2020-21 budget. As you know, the statutory limit is 4%, but those in the audit committee note from the pre-engagement meeting with Wes that they're not concerned with the 4% this year due to the expenses that districts are saving due to the 15-week shutdown due to COVID last spring. So the 4.63 was strategically arrived at after putting $400,000 into a TRS pension reserve. We are in good position for the 2020-21 year, based on some financial expenditures we made towards the end of last year. I outlined that in my memo to superintendent. So explain how we got there where we were last year. And basically, we have $364,000 more in fund balance than the 4% statutory limit. We're going to need every, every dime of it in 2020-21. So the short memo, it's like one page, explains things. There's a fund balance analysis that rolls up everything. If you want to spend your weekend looking at all the details there too, but that's what the audit firm looks at. And we'll be reporting on to the audit committee and then the board in October.
Thank you, Drew.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Drew or? If not, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? So I believe I did hear everybody's eye. Good. Next is number six. Can I get a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the resolution to suspend conflicting board policies or administrative regulation procedures due to COVID-19.
Thank you, Dave. Second? How, was that you?
Ah, yes.
I'll second it. Is there any questions or need for explanation to this? Susan, did you need to say anything or it's pretty clear?
So let me give you an example, if you're wondering what might this look like. The high school currently has a procedure for having seniors take five and a half credits, whether they need the five and a half or not. Share for seniors who choose, they could take just the three and a half that they need to get to graduation. So if you're an on-track student. And part of that is the idea that we would reduce the number of students in the building again at any one time. However, if you're a senior who wants to take five and a half, six and a half, whatever, you can still do that. But as opposed to requiring out of our seniors at this point, we are going to suspend for the so that's the type of thing we're talking about.
Thank you. Any questions on this?
I mean, is there a time limit on the resolution, this in perpetuity, or is this just for the school year?
Just for the school year, Rick.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? So pass. Thank you. Number seven? Can I get a motion?
I'll motion to review and adopt the resolution to endorse the opening plan submitted by the superintendent of schools on July 31st, 2020, due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Can I get it? Thank you. That was Kim, right? Thank you, Kim. Can I get a second?
I'll second it, Dave.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any, hopefully everyone got to review the resolution. Are there any questions?
Susan, once again, is this in perpetuity or for the school year?
Just for this school year.
Thank you.
No other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Thank you. I'm almost, this next one, I just, I can't help but giggle a little. Next is the review and the adoption of the revised 2021 school calendar. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion to review and adopt the revised 2021 school calendar.
Thank you, Kim. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Are there any questions other than we probably can be pretty assured that this will be, we'll be doing this at many of our meetings? Any questions on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. So passed. This one seems like it's going to remind me of the one when we do the tax rolls over and over. I guess something changes. Communications?
I'll move communications, A through L, staffing, 1 through 10, placement of children with disabilities, and the minutes for the organizational meeting on July 13th, regular meeting on July 13th, and regular meeting on July 27th as submitted.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions on these? If not, all in favor?
Oh, I got a second.
You didn't second? Kim, I was expecting that. Kim, second.
I know, we go together.
Thank you. Kim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
So we, so pass six ayes and one abstention. Thank you. And I would like to take the minute, I think Matthew Morgan's with us. I believe that's the case. Matt, it looks like he goes by Matt. I want to take the, this time to welcome Matt to Scotia. Wish him the best of luck and we're happy to have him aboard. As you probably know, we're very proud of our district, very proud of our students and the, the people who work in our district. So we're really happy to have you on board. I don't think I'm missing anyone else who may have been identified. on this. If I am, I apologize. Susan, I'm not missing anyone, right? Who might be in attendance?
I don't believe so, Dave.
Okay. So Matt, thank you and welcome aboard. And with that, I'm going to try to find my place again. Oh, we have the oh, just send a note, please, again. Please destroy your placement of children with disabilities or put them in a safe location. And when we are back together, bring them to our next meeting and they will be handled in that way. We do have a treasures report. Are there any questions on the treasures report? And we do have a June extracurricular activity fund report. Any questions on that? If not, we'll move to other business. And I have everybody's favorite other business. It's conference time. And with conference time comes our resolutions. And I don't know how much people were able to read through all of this, but it, I would highly suggest that it's important to read the document stated position statements 2020. That is our this current year's position statements that we would be voting on. They've included a bunch of other, I don't want to call it propaganda, information, including the resolution kit, what you need to do if you want to add a resolution. I I'm a little bit disappointed that we are only given from the 28th to the 18th here to review this and comment. But I will ask Susan if we can block a period of time in our meeting on the 14th to review the resolutions and vote on them as a group?
Absolutely, Dave.
Thank you. We also would, and I I say that because if we want to rebut or suggest any amendments, and Pam, I can't think of recently us doing any. I don't know if you, you might remember. But that deadline is September 18th.
Yeah, we have disagreed with some of the positions and just had our member representative get up and just tell people that we, you know, why we object.
Right.
We have never actually written out a statement or a rebuttal.
Right. Thanks. That was my understanding when, you know, I was doing this. At that time, we probably will also take a vote on who wants to be the representative, our voting delegate, and we'll have a little conversation around what that means and stuff. And this is a gentle reminder that if you plan to attend and if you haven't let Carol know, please let Carol know as soon as possible. And she'll get us all. She'll get us all locked in. I'm, I, I, I'm not exactly sure why this still says that the annual business meeting is going to be held in New York City, but
I don't think they changed that pledge at all.
No, I don't think so either, Pam, because it, you know, they still have
You know, I'm sure they're not going to send us all hot now breakfast.
Right. So just please take a look at them and see what yous all think and we'll talk about the resolutions at the next, at our next call. And again, the, there's guidelines that tell you what the process is. And then there's, I don't know if people can see, this is the one that has the resolutions in. They're quite frankly, a little bit different than we normally used to see. So we'll have a discussion about that. Anyone else have any other new business? Sorry to lay that one on you, but.
Dave, I just want to thank you for your participation and leadership in the town halls last week and thank those of you who were also online and able to. That was quite an achievement. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. I, um, I was encouraged by how many people participated. And I said this during the meeting, for those of you who are unable to attend, I'm glad that people are starting to use email and the question and answer period as a way of communicating with us other than thinking we're reading every Facebook comment because we're not. And so I'm really glad that people submitted so many questions. Do we have a timeframe, Susan, for them? For the responses?
What we're going to try to do, Dave, is and at least get the four or five most frequently asked questions up on the website, replacing the information that's there right now as some of that, of course, is already out of date. And hopefully by the end of that part, by the end of the week.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I do want to thank you, Karen, Drew, everyone that was involved in in doing these meetings because I, I really hope that people felt they were beneficial. I know I, I learned something new at every meeting. So, you know, I'm glad that we did them. I'm glad that they went well. And all of you, thank you for attending because I know people, people sent comments that I think were very helpful on that. Do we have any other questions or comments that anybody wanted to bring up as new business?
David's Karen. Bobby asked me to remind you about, okay, thank you.
That was my next piece.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm glad you did it. I have them sitting on my desk. Thank you, Bobby. So today I had to go in and sign some papers. And one of the papers, and I don't know if folks remember this, Rick, this is something we do every year. I'll read through the beginning of of one of these. It's the 2020 tax warrant for that portion of Scotia Glenville School situated in the town of Glenville, Schenectady County Tax Collector for the Scotia Glenville School District. And what it does is it hereby commanded that they collect 30,900, in the same manner that they collect the town and county taxes. And then there is a comment about unexpend, unexpendanted surplus funds. And we normally have to sign this in person. There is a second one to do with Amsterdam and then Montgomery County, and that's collecting $19,581. And then there's one for the Saratoga County located in the town of Charlton that they collect taxes for for our district in the amount of 50,733. And if folks would be willing, what I would like to do is to go through each person individually. And if you are willing to allow Bobby to sign your name to these, we asked if this would be okay. And we believe this meets the requirements that the county, each of the county town offices are looking for. So are the, are folks okay with doing that? Let me put it this way. Is anybody opposed to doing that? Okay, so what I'm going to do, go ahead.
Alternatively, we just, we would come in and sign it ourselves?
The alternative is to come in and sign it, which is a little bit complicated now because of the district office. You know, having the shutdown, basically where you, you'd have to go in during certain hours and sign it. You're more than welcome to do that. You'll all be getting a copy of this as well. But if you prefer to go in and sign in person, you're welcome. Those who rather do it this way, I'm, I would like to just do it this way. So so there's no, no issue either way, folks.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so Kim, are you fine with Bobby signing the town of Glenville, town of Amsterdam, and town of Charlton tax forms, tax warrants? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay.
I am also.
Kim, was that you?
That was me. I am also fine with Bobby signing all three.
Thank you.
It was sorrow. I'm also fine with all three being signed.
Thank you, Dave. Um, Dan?
Sure thing. I'm good with it.
Thank you. Hal?
Yes, I trust Bobby to sign.
Okay. Rick, did you want to go in and sign? Is that what I was hearing or? It's no problem either way, honestly.
Yeah, I'll bring coffee and I'll sign it.
I don't know if you can bring coffee.
Okay.
I don't think you can bring anything in there. So, but it's a very nice gesture.
Rick, come to the back door. If you've got coffee, I'll let you in.
There you go. The police in the front won't let you in, but Susan will. There you go, Rick. You can bring the, you can bring a Dunkin' pot or whatever they call that. So, and I've already signed it. So thank you, everyone. Rick, thanks for going in. Do you know when you'd be able to get there?
Email Bobby tomorrow and we'll figure out a time.
Okay, that's great. Perfect. Thank you. So would that business done? Bobby, anything else for me? No.
She said thank you.
I wanted to try to get her on camera. Any other new business for folks? All right. Thank you, everyone. We're getting close. This is always such an exciting time of the year when our kids are coming back to school. This year is a little bit different, but still the school year is about to start and and that's an exciting thing because that's what we're all here for is to try to make the best environment for our children to learn and for our community to be paying for their education. And so this is sort of like what we've all signed up for. So I get excited this time of the year.
Is this our last meeting before school starts?
This is it.
Right. Good luck, everyone.
Good luck, everyone. Good luck in the, to our school district, those teachers that are on. Good luck to you and our administrators that are on. Good luck to them and parents and all of you young parents who have children in the school. Good luck to you. But thanks, everybody.
This is the first year I am already done back to school shopping. I'm finished. I'm done. So the online is a wonderful thing.
Great job. Can I, if there's, again, there's not going to be a hearing in privilege of the floor to end our meeting tonight. So would that, if we could get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we had seven, six seconds. So I, I think, I don't know who I heard, but give me one more. Okay, Rick, second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining from adjourning? Thank you all. Have a great evening. Have a great week and we'll be in touch.
You too.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Good night.